I'd like you to be fixed here.
So all we have is a discussion again tonight.
I don't think you want my answer, so. I know what I did. What's up? Hello, how are you? This is God. I like level of the corner of the world.
Good evening, Number One. This is the special meeting of the City Council of December 4th, 2017. Noting the absence of Mayor Smith and prior to roll call, I'd ask for a motion to appoint Alderman Jacobson as the temporary chair of this meeting.
Second.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagin?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Seven present.
With that in mind, I am going to call the special meeting of the City Council, December 4th, 2017, to order and ask Clerk Scott for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finuchin?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Fagin?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Seven yes.
As we only have one item on the agenda tonight, the 2018 proposed budget revisions to discuss, I will open the floor for that discussion.
All right.
I'm gonna ask that Molly present, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Good, sorry. Good evening. So we're, tonight is a special meeting, basically another budget workshop for us to go over some more changes to the proposed budget that was released on October 25th. We met last Monday at the first reading of the budget, and so now we'll have this workshop, and then the next step will be December 11th for the first and second reading of the budget. So tonight, the changes at the last meeting, the November 27th meeting, we had put together the multiple kind of options to look for expenditure reductions, and there were kind of three options: the 5% reduction list, 2.5% reduction list, and then one to meet fund balance. Based on what I heard at the November 27th meeting, we put together the 2.5% expenditure reduction list, and then we used, council had done a survey on all of the 5% expenditure reductions, and the feedback from the survey aligned most closely to that 2.5% expenditure reduction list. So that's what I was calling last week, and I'm gonna continue to call this week the A-list. Then we added additional reductions or additions back into the budget based off that survey, and there was a second grouping called the B-list, the clear direction, where a majority of council indicated one kind of favorite or one way with the items, to either add it back or to keep it reduced from the budget. And then there was the C-list, with kind of split decisions, that there wasn't clear direction from council which way they wanted to go, but there was at least enough feedback in there, we asked more questions. So from that meeting, we took off three things from that split decision list, and I came back and kind of reran the financial numbers of where we stand. So what I did, from that meeting to today, and what you received in the report that went out last week for this meeting, is first, there was direction for no home rule sales tax increase. So what this means is, in the general fund, there's a $417,000 reduction FY '18 from the proposed budget. So if you recall, the proposed budget had how staff broke out the sales tax increase, and then there were changes that were recommended from the Financial Advisory Committee, but I'm showing the reductions from the proposed book, because you can go back to that book to see how it was broken out, and that's what we're ultimately revising for you to bring back to at the next meeting. And so that was a $417,000 reduction in FY '18, and then about $1.3 million recurring in the five-year plan. Capital Projects Fund, it was a reduction for streets, about the $417,000 '18, and $1.7 million recurring, so the annual amount that that would have been. And then the Capital Equipment Fund for fleet, this was about $232,000 in '18 and $928,000 annually. And what that does in the Capital Projects Fund is the additional funding we were going to use to do increased street improvement during that year. We'll go back to the initial level of the street improvements that we'll do. For capital equipment, there were additional vehicles to be replaced, so what happens here is, we're going to eliminate the replacement of one police squad, so there were three included in the budget, and shift the remaining two squads to use asset forfeiture funding. This is one-time funding that we can put towards this use, but it's not recurring in the future. And then we eliminate the fire department support vehicle from that fund as well. So then we looked at the expenditure reduction list, and it's $976,000 from that 2.5% list, the A-list, and the associated revenue decreases there, and I added the council data survey results. So the split decision ones that we revised were to keep the social services, the non-northwestern, funded at $144,500 in the general fund. We kept the crossing guards funded one time in FY '18 for $50,000, and we're keeping the parking community service officers funded at $76,478, but it also has offsetting revenue. So then I updated the five-year forecast with all the above information, and I did it with two, kind of, two options in the future. So we had put together a police multi-year staffing plan and asked to add three officers during the FY '18 year for staffing, but the funding really wouldn't kick until FY '19 budget. So when you look at the two financial forecasts that's included, the FY '18 year is the same in both, because the funding of the police differs in the following FY '19 year. So based on all that information, and we kept the same, we've talked about these revisions from before, I kept the same lowered income tax, the property purchases included, all of that information we've talked about at multiple meetings, that remained, and we looked at the forecast, and really, again, it's a trend tool to see where we'll be in year five. So with the changes that we made, with no sales tax and the expenditure lists, the A, B, and C list, but C revised for those three items you wanted to keep, FY '18 would end the fiscal year at 25.51% of the projected fund balance. So now you're above your financial policy to have 25% of expenditures in that year. Where it starts to differ is in FY '19, because now you would add the three police officers, but we were not adding the sales tax funding. So if you did not add the officers, FY '19 would end the year projected at 23.04%, but with the additional officers, it would go down to 21.5%. And so this continues, so year five, we would end, it's estimated that FY '22 with three officers would be 8.09% of fund balance, or of expenditures, the fund balance amount, and then no additional officers would bring that up to 12.82% of your expenditures for general fund. But I do want to note that this is a trend. You can correct this trend in any given year, small changes do affect it, because it's cumulative in nature. And so what has happened, you remember a few years ago, your fund balance in the general fund was $22,000, and now you're almost to 9, 10 million, depending on what's decided, is there's kind of four factors that go into it. You've made expenditure reductions in different years that affect that outcome, so you've never really hit that cliff, but you've been able to build that fund balance because you haven't been spending all the expenditures. You've underspent the expenditures, is what happens, is just how we're conservative in revenues and don't want to be, you know, too high, so the revenues come in below where we're projecting. We like to budget conservatively, so hopefully at least the revenues come in where we're at, but what's nicer is sometimes when they come in above forecast. The expenditures are the same. We'll budget for, we have known contracts, we budget for the contracts, but then there's some that are upcoming, things that we would like to purchase. So we put in what we think is the best cost for those items, but as you know, we do quote first supplies, services. We also, you know, as the amounts get larger, have requests for proposals or bid out items, and that usually helps bring the cost of the item that we're looking to purchase down. So if we budgeted $50,000 and a bid comes in at $45,000, that's $5,000, then that moves into the fund balance. So there's other ways that you affect this fifth year, or there's, again, the revenues coming in above where we budgeted, or revenue increases is the fourth. So those are kind of the four factors that play into this. So it's really a trend to see where you're going, and a forecast is based on, if you do nothing to change what you're doing today, this is how it would happen. So there is a difference between the, having the officers in that forecast to not having the officer, since we took away that revenue source that was identified in the original proposed budget. So going forward, and for FY '19 budget process, we're gonna start that in January of this year, and we've talked about it a little bit. But to kind of put all of this into context, it's really the next step, is on December 11th, we'll come back to you with first and second reading for the budget, with the intention of getting to January, where we'll come with a full schedule of what we want to do for the FY '19 budget with council and go over the schedule. But really start from a high level. Start with what's your vision of the city, because the vision, that strategic plan plays into how you would deliver services or what services you want to deliver. And then to kind of support that vision, you have goal setting, and so council will have goal setting coming up in January, and that sets that, and how do we get to that vision of future? And then from the goals, you kind of set your action plan, how do we get there? And that's really supported by what services do you deliver? How do you deliver them? How do you want to deliver them? And what funding mechanisms are you using for those services? So we're starting this process at a bigger level to get your input sooner, at the higher level, and then working our way down to the lower level. So you have a full year of going through this process. And this will encompass a lot of things that I sometimes don't always think that they're part of the budget process, like, is there a TIF 2, or TIF 2's ending, TIF 1's coming up, do we create a new TIF? Well, that really does impact how you do the budget, but sometimes you think of those in isolation, but all of these are kind of impacts into how the budget goes going forward. So in that report, we kind of have the first quarter identified of how we would start the budget process, but in January would fill out the whole year, and then work with your input on what tweaks we need to make, and what parts go to the Financial Advisory Committee, and how all of that works together. In the attachments, you have the attachment A to this report is your expenditure reduction list, the A, B, and C, but what changed from last week to this week is, I've added back those descriptions for you, so as a quick reminder. And I will note that I found in going through this is, when we added back the, well, you know, I got my pages mixed up here, the tree trimming and replacement under clear direction, the description was inaccurate, I didn't catch that. So what this does is puts the trees back onto the current cycle of the seven to eight-year tree trimming cycle, because it restores the $35,000 in total. So that's just an error on my part on that description. Oops. So then today, I sent out a separate report, because I had received kind of questions about four different areas in the budget. We switch to the next report. And so I have a few council members ask me questions on these four different things, so we'll just start at the beginning. The very first one is the intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County regarding the peace road interchange. This was in the proposed budget. Staff had put in the revenue, the sales tax part that we share with the county, but we didn't put an expenditure to pay the county the $245,000 on the agreement, with the intention of ending this agreement since it revolved around expanding the peace road tollway, and that the city has paid the portion of the toll, the amount that was paid to improve it, plus interest. Since last meeting, the mayor, city manager, and dean have met with some of the county, and they've discussed this agreement and kind of the history, what the legal interpretations are, and where to go. So at this point in time, there's a follow-up meeting that will happen after this meeting tonight, but some council had expressed interest in keeping this as part of the funded budget, at least for the fiscal year '18, while staff works with the county to determine where we go with this agreement, or if the agreement ends. So that was a $245,000, or it could be a $245,000 increase to the expenditures that was not included in that five, the two, five-year forecast you just had. The second one was their questions around the code compliance reorganization. This really revolves around the code compliance coordinator position and realigning the staffing that would go for that. This code compliance has a lot to do with the crime-free housing. So what would happen is, if the coordinator position is eliminated, then the management analyst would move to the community development and help support in kind of the data and the financial reporting and analysis that comes with crime-free housing, but the supervisory portion of it would go to the chief building officer. There was some interest in keeping this position as well. That would be a $132,000 increase, it's a kind of full cost of that position to keep in the general fund. And then this would preserve the level of code enforcement that you have right now. So there would be a reduction in shifting duties and how that was organized, if you eliminate this position. The next, there was questions on the snow removal for the arterial streets. This is for the sidewalks that are outside of the downtown. It's for the sidewalks such as Lincoln Highway, Sycamore Road, First Street, and Fourth Street. This was removed from the expenditures. There was some interest in adding this back to the general fund as well, so that's a $35,000 expenditure. And then there were questions on adding a local motor fuel tax. So currently, the city has a .02 cent per gallon, two cent per gallon tax for the Capital Projects Fund, and that's about $360,000 per year, that's for streets. And the airport fund has an additional 1.5 cents per gallon to support their operations, and that's $270,000 in that streets vein of what the tax can be applied to. So any one cent increase is estimated to generate $180,000 that can be used for streets, especially in light of the no sales tax. We are keeping the streets on the same replacement schedule, or maintenance schedule as we have now without an increase. And that was one area that was identified, and the five-year plan is needing more attention, street maintenance. So since these were kind of four separate items, and not, you know, one alderman had a question on it, it was kind of a combination of a different alderman having questions. I put together different options and scenarios, and I tried to give you kind of the, any possible way you could probably put these numbers together. So if you look on page three of that report, I spelled out, first I wanted to give you the impact of each of these items separately. So if you were just going to add back the peace road funding for the county, the $245,000 in FY '18, that would bring that general fund balance down to 24.7%. So you're .3 below that fund balance level. If this is a one-time expense, fund balance is an appropriate use for one-time funding, so that is an option to fall below that, but the council, of course, has the choice to do that. The second option is the code compliance coordinator. If you were to add back that position only, you would stay above the 25% expenditure target in your policies, and that'd be 25.1%. So you're just above. And option three, the snow removal for the arterial streets, the sidewalks outside of downtown, it's $35,000. Again, you would stay above the 25% financial policy for expenditure, or for the fund balance at 25.4%. If you were to add back all three and not have either offset expenditure reduction or offset revenue, it would be a $412,000 increase, but it would bring you below the 25% target to 24.2%. Option four is just local motor fuel tax kind of on its own, because it's not part of the general fund, it would go into the Capital Projects Fund, so like it said, one cent, $180,000. And it really wouldn't be a change to fund balance in that fund, because whatever you bring in revenue is what, then I would assume that you would want to turn around and spend on the street maintenance. Option five is the combination of one and two, which is the IGA for peace road and the code compliance coordinator. These two, I think I heard the most questions about. And if you added both together without any offset, it would bring the general fund balance to 24.3% of expenditures, but what I've added in option five is, if you went through the clear direction, the B and C, clear direction split decision as revised, and removed all the items that we added, such as the marketing merchandise, the materials, technology replacement, and took those expenditures that council had indicated they wanted back into the budget, that could offset adding back those two items on their own, the IGA and the code compliance coordinator, and bring you just to the 25% fund balance. So you can see that's a, but $220,000 reduction of multiple items from those two lists. The only one I did not include off those two lists is the special event support, because it's $53,000 expenditure and a 50, or I'm sorry, $54,000 expenditure with a $54,000 revenue, so it wouldn't make much change to your expenditure target that you're trying to reach for the fund balance. The second option, well, it's option number six, is again, just those two, the IGA and code compliance, but kind of changing how you would do the expenditure reductions. So the expenditure reductions here would be a portion of some of the items that were identified on the clear direction split decision. It was the engineering lab supplies for $5,000, RIC $8,300, engineering intern $11,000, tuition reimbursement $23,500, the part-time property maintenance inspector, just about $29,000, central business district sidewalk snow plowing $35,000. But the difference is, we'd stop there on the general fund individual items, and we reduced the transfer to the equipment and fleet fund by $108,000, $108,000 just over. And what that would do is, in the equipment and fleet fund, would delay purchasing a dump truck to another fiscal year. So those are the different options and scenarios that I put together for you, but what I also did is that ending fund balance is cumulative, so you can kind of see the impact on what one item would do the fund balance. Some of them are really small, so it didn't really change from the item before in the cumulative total, but I was trying to give you some idea of the impact that it would have on the fund balance total, so if you wanted to do some combination, we could look at doing that as well. At this time, it's really, do you have questions?
I'm gonna open it up for questions of the council, to see what.
You know, on these budget items to take off here, man, I'd rather see the central business district sidewalk snow plowing stay in, and eventually maybe get an SSA along with the lights for the downtown. I think the downtown snow plowing is more important than, well, the boulder more important, I should say. Go ahead.
Well, I'm confused about this one with the description, because we call it central business, but is it really just the central business, or is it the sidewalks that go out?
There's two. So the first one that was asked about to add back in are the ones not in the downtown area for the sidewalks.
Okay.
So that'd be adding back $35,000, while the downtown sidewalk plowing had stayed in as a funded item, so to take that out, that's $35,000. However, in these options where that one's listed, I actually don't have adding back the sidewalks for the non-downtown area. That was only shown in the first scenario.
And that was, hang on here.
It's $35,000.
That's also, that's $35,000 for downtown, and what is it for Sycamore Road?
$35,000.
Both $35, okay, thank you. All right. For now.
So you could just flip-flop it. I mean, that's one of the options there as well.
Alderman Finuchin?
Yeah, one of the things that, one of the positions that we have talked about, a potential reduction is in the code compliance coordinator, and it says that the 132 equals the one full-time and one part-time position. Gina, I know you've spoken regarding the effect in this program, I wondered if you'd like to speak to that again.
Yeah, the council, and I just, as the fortune would have it, had the opportunity to read the analysis done by one of the staff members in the police department, which was an excellent analysis this morning. I would highly recommend the retention of that position, the benefits, especially in regard to crimes in the rental properties themselves, and that's the clear distinction, I think, that you have to hear. I think there's a perception that it can deal with crimes just about anywhere, but crimes on the property or on or about the property, it still remains a significant factor in enhancing public safety. So for that reason, and I can go further into it, but for that reason, I would recommend that that stay within the budget.
Alderman Verbic?
I'm certainly willing to support these items that have been suggested by all of us to add back in. I would also like to include the municipal ban. The reason I would like to make sure that that's in is because I don't feel like we've given them enough time to prepare for this occurrence, meaning that they can't prepare for the next season in a timely fashion, even if we were to make a reduction. But what I would like to see, though, are options to offset these additions. So again, from a priority standpoint, us not really having that time to go through these items, I would like to see these items as suggested by us added back in, but find offset for those additions.
Alderman Ping?
I don't see here where the ban being taken out here.
So the municipal ban was originally in the 5% list for a full reduction, and what was included in the two and a half, the A-list, is a $10,000 reduction, and we did that based on kind of the trend of them underspending each year, so it's just more to bring their budget in line to what they were actually spending.
Got you.
To be clear, this document doesn't show A, but we've already agreed that A is included in this. This is in addition to A, correct?
Right, so A, A, B, and C were in the first report, the one that's called proposed budget revision, dated November 30th, so that shows A, B, and C together. The one where I've gotten feedback since the last meeting to today, is the report that was released today shows those kind of four specific budget items that I've gotten additional questions about.
Is it 2.5%, right? Or the 5%?
It's the 2.5% is the A.
Right.
So the ban is that $10,000 reduction within that A-list.
Right there.
Any other questions? Alderman Finuchin?
Well, along with Alderman Verbic's comments about finding a way to keep code compliance, I certainly would like to keep the coordinator, and again, find ways to offset that money. Now, in the notes, it mentions, Molly, that there's also one part-time position. Can we break that cost out, so we have a better idea what number we need to make up?
Yeah, they're shown separately. So the 132 is the coordinator position specifically, and then you had the further, the 28,000 for the part-time inspector.
Okay, because that's not mentioned in the narrative. Okay, because that's not mentioned in the narrative here. That's, it's in the graph. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But the part-time inspector change was included on the C list is adding back one because originally in the A list, it was a reduction of two part-time inspectors in council, the B or C list, and it added back one, so there was one that would be eliminated. It is the C list that one was added back.
All right. So then let's just, if I may, Pro Tem, just brainstorm a little bit here. One of the options present, presented in here is to delay that dump truck to another fiscal year, $144,000. That in of itself would make up for the code compliance. I mean, that's at least something that we can consider as a trade-off. I hate to do that to you, Tim, but I think it's something that we can at least discuss. And then that leaves a little bit more room for something else, too, but at least that may be a starting off point for that discussion. I think the bigger item, though, is the Peace Road funding issue. With that still under discussion between the city staff and county staff, you know, we really won't necessarily know the outcome of that for some time. And, you know, which way do we decide to go? Do we decide to leave it in the budget and then make a budget reduction mid-year if we agree to go that way? Or do we take it out now and then it could get added back in later if it works in our favor? So those are just some of the things that we need to discuss this evening.
So just to clarify, the $245,000, the expenditure to the county is not included in the budget. So right now, if you didn't make a decision, if you wanted to wait until there were further discussions, then it would stay out of the budget, and then you could come back at any time to amend the budget if the discussions resulted in you wanting to continue the agreement or a one-time payment of the $245,000 and amend it to what has been agreed. So you could leave that one, I think, for a later decision would be acceptable, especially because you're waiting for other input on that. Or you could put it back in and we could find other services to reduce, or you could use fund balance to cover that one particular item. So you have kind of some options in how you would want to handle it.
Just to be clear, effectively, the budget we're being shown now is option five then, correct? And we're starting at that 24.3 percent with the additional cuts to get us back to the 25%?
No. So what you're being shown, the budget information that you had was included in the first report that you got last week, the November 30th report, that showed just the changes to the A, B, and C, the no sales tax, everything that's outlined in that report is included in those financial five-year forecasts. Everything on here, I've just given you options. So there's no, I have no, not a single one of these has been included in how that would or how your budget would be. So I tried to give you how it would impact those forecasts if we put them in in different scenarios, but it's really open for you guys to look at these right now.
Alderman Fagan.
One item here, recurring expenses for the IHSA funding for 6250. And Bill, maybe you can help me out on this. We get, what do they say are tax that we received on that weekend that normally brings in?
I don't really can express a tax sales number, but I can express more of a multimillion-dollar economic impact from that.
Right.
You know, when you have approximately 30,000 people coming to town, they buy food, they buy fuel.
Right.
There's a number of hotel rooms, you know, the teams that stay overnight, that's all economic impact on the city and on the county, along with some of the surrounding area. I don't know that there's any way to break out an exact sales tax impact on that.
I'm just more concerned about saving $6,300 than losing out $10,000, $15,000 in revenue, especially when people are coming into the city. And it's kind of like some of these other ones where it's the money going, like the ambulance service with the city and, you know, the money going in, money going out, and it's a wash. This, I feel that the 6250, we could actually be losing revenue in the long run.
Well, if I may, I think it isn't just losing revenue, it's losing economic impact on all our businesses around town, particularly the West End businesses in terms of the restaurants and the fuel and things like that. I know that a number of people that come to town, you know, will go ahead and eat pre-game, then go to their game or stop post-game and have something to eat. So the economic impact on the businesses
Right.
is certainly greater than that 6250 that you're talking about.
Okay.
And that expenditure is from the total of 50,000, correct? The proposed reduction?
The, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Our total sponsorship is 50,000, correct? 25,000 each year over two years for IHSA?
No. It's been 25,000 in the past, and what we had done previously is we had budgeted 12,500 per fiscal year. So, I mean, another option for the council to consider is if you didn't want to budget 12,500 every year, you could just budget zero this year and next fiscal year, budget the full 25,000. That's an alternate, knowing that it's every other year.
Also, that's why on, so option five was using all of the kind of clear direction and split decision expenditures you wanted to add back in, but then option six kind of stops at a higher or a less amount of those reductions or those additions back to the budget being now reduced from the budget, and that's kind of where the trade-off is on using the capo equipment. So IHSA is not on the option six version.
Got you.
Alderman Noriko.
As we're looking at individual items, tuition reimbursement, that was cut by half from 47 to 23.5. And then now it looks like it's going to be cut totally?
Yes, that's the further.
I have a question for HR Director Chris Randall. First of all, I, as I recall, last year, tuition reimbursement was budgeted at 30,000. Are there more people taking advantage of it?
Yes. As, as you may know about the retirements, there's a lot of employees that they're looking over the succession planning and trying to step up and compete for the promotional opportunities. So we have more people this year applying for the tuition reimbursement so they can be prepared to take on those supervisory positions when the time comes.
You know, I would, pardon me, hate to totally eliminate the tuition reimbursement funding if an individual, say, is in their final year or their final semester of a program and had been counting on this. You know, I feel badly for someone who was starting a program, but especially the individual who has made good grades, who's, you know, committed to the city, and then, you know, we drop it. And the budget impact for continuing it, and, you know, we could have you take a look at how many people are getting close to the end, but the budget impact would be relatively small, in fact, very small for those individuals, but would mean a great deal for them, and I would think would have an impact on employee morale then.
So I would be, well, the Peace Road funding, I don't know what you want to do with that because that's, I guess, neither here nor there. If it's not in the original budget, we have to come back to it after the meetings to come up with it. The code compliance coordinator, I think we need to keep that so that we can continue the assistance in our crime. I don't want to say battle, but war on crime, whatever, our crime deterrence. So I, I don't know, I haven't heard anybody talk against it, so that we have consensus on keeping, keeping that going? Just to kind of make some decisions so that we can get a final thing to vote on next week. You know, we're not taking an action item vote, but if we can get a consensus on this, that would make our finance director's position a lot easier rather than running through seven options to up and down, up and down, all over the place. So do we want to make a commitment to that part?
Alderman Verbig.
Again, I'm supportive of it and other items with offset. So I wanted to clarify with Alderman Fagan and Noriko, you had mentioned adding items back in. Are you looking for an offset to counter that? Are you comfortable just adding those items?
I'm comfortable just adding those items out.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Faver.
Yeah, I'll agree. I'm in agreement with the code compliance coordinator. I'm in agreement with adding back in the central business district plowing. I had a question. I don't know if it's going to be possible to determine the impact, but what is the impact of the halftime property maintenance inspector? I don't know what the part-time, what impact that's going to have on crime free or?
Well, so far, the, there were originally in the 17 budget, five part-time inspectors that have been filled either at two or three consistently, and there's been recruitment issues basically for positions four and five. So these two are currently vacant. I think it would help, but, oh, Joellen is here.
As Molly indicated, those two positions have been difficult for us to fill, and we have only been utilizing two or three of the code compliance inspector part-time positions. It is challenging. We hope to do more, and we just haven't been able to gear up to that point. But one of the things that we talked about for this cycle was to get that third person in and have it there continuously, potentially throughout the year while we have our new code chief building official in place. And then if we need to have a conversation about adjustments in future years for those last two, we could do that. Certainly, we'd like to keep them in place, but I think our position at this point was to see if we could do it with three and then come back to you next year with an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add two things? One, the, currently, before you make any decision on this, the central business district sidewalk plowing is budgeted as a service. It's the sidewalk plowing outside of the downtown that is not. That was cut in the last report. So if you look at option six to fund, and it's also in five, really, but in six, if you wanted to fund the sidewalk plowing outside of the central business district, one of the services that gets reduced is the snow plowing in the central business district. So it's either a flip-flop, but I will say the $35,000 is approximately 0.1% of what you need in fund balance. So if you wanted to add in the sidewalks outside of the central business district, you could do that through, well, there's a little more funding available in the capital equipment fund, so you could fund, if you want to do six, and add in the snow plowing outside the central business district and just increase the transfer from that equipment and fleet fund. It'd bring that fund balance down to about $11,000. That would fund everything here without making any, and that would include reducing the central business district. But if you wanted to add that or keep that funded, it'll be about a 0.1% difference in the fund balance, so you'd be slightly under the 25% threshold if you wanted to keep that plowing in both areas.
All right. Molly, let me just restate, so I think we're all clear on everything here. So if we choose to do nothing at this time with the intergovernmental agreement on Peace Road funding, it's not in the budget now as an expense. So that, if we just left it alone, it'd have no impact at this point. That's something that, once we have the more information, we could deal with at that time. If we were to add, the consensus is to add the code compliance coordinator back in, and the snow removal on the arterial streets, it's about $157,000. Without doing the hard math, I think that still leaves us just above the 25% mark, if I'm correct.
I believe you're correct, but let me just look really quickly at that. I think that one's easy enough for me to put in here right now.
Okay, so just to touch under, so we could look at some other place and to remove a little bit to stay over that. I mean, if we could agree on those two items remain in, then I think we've at least accomplished something right now up to this point, and then we continue to work on some of these other budget items that we do want to talk about. I mean, is, can we, if we have a consensus on that, on those two items, and then to go from there. I know we also do want to talk a little bit about the ban. There's a couple other things that I'm sure we want to discuss. So at least if we have agreement on that, that gives Molly clear direction on those two items, and we can go forward.
So Alderman Finuchek, just for the record, before the council takes consensus, can you just restate that so that we have that clearly in the minutes?
Sure. That we retain in the budget as expense items, the code compliance coordinator and the snow removal for arterial street sidewalks, those outside of downtown.
Thank you.
So Dave, you want to ask for consensus or?
Kate, Alderman Noriko.
I have a question, and I'd like to hear the opinions of some of the other council members. I'm not so tied to the snow removal for the streets, for the sidewalks outside of downtown. I mean, I could kind of go either way. And I'm curious, the individuals who are more passionate about that issue?
You know, what I see the biggest part of on that sidewalk is South Forest Street. The kids that you see going up and down from the junior high going all the way up to Taylor Street. That's my concern. I'm not that
Okay, that's a good point.
I'm not that concerned about Sycamore Road, but I am concerned about South Forest Street with the kids.
Right. And basically, there's no parkway along those places, along those streets for the snow to go. You know, when the snowplow goes down my street and I'm out there snowblowing and I wave at him
Can you get this?
He's going to do the, you know, that's a necessary thing, but most of that snow goes on that parkway. You go up Sycamore Road, you go down South Forest Street, there is nothing there, and you end up with, you know, a big mound of snow, which becomes a public safety issue because then you end up with people walking in the street because that's the clear, clear path. And that becomes slick and icy, and then, you know, people have dark clothes on, you can't see them. So not only is it a nicety, but it's So, not only is it a nicety, but it's also a public safety issue, you know, for kids walking, for so on and so forth. So, you know, it's, it's an offset for the way those streets are constructed.
Those are very valid points, good points. Thank you.
Alderman Faver?
So, I was going to say, I'm, I'm in agreement with keeping those two, as Alderman Fanukin suggested, but as, you know, as has been said before, is perhaps this is an opportunity to visit this next year as an SSA potentially for those areas.
May, I'm trying to still figure this out. Joellen, the two openings that you have now are either, is that the, taking one of those two open positions out or taking that third person out? We got, because there's five, right?
There are, there are five budgeted part-time positions currently. Right now, we have three, and we were talking about letting the other two go for this coming fiscal year.
Option six, though, we've only got one.
And A has one, so it'd be two in total.
Gotcha.
From the conversation, I think it's probably easiest to go through the first section on page three here of the different options we're given. Obviously, there's some additional ones now that we've come up with tonight that we're also going to have to figure out whether or not the majority supports or does not. Being that the budgeted items are pretty simple, at least presented to us in one through three, I appreciate that Bill is asking for two or three, just for time's sake, I think it makes sense to ask the questions of one, two, and three, and those, what we believe at least we should be changing in budget numbers. From that decision, obviously, there's an outcropping of whether or not we want offsetting reductions, and there's several lists here to do that. For clarity's sake, I think it's important to understand where we're at, at one, two, and three. Does anyone have any issues with all three of those being put back into the budget at this point? Options one, two, and three as presented, which would be the revenue from the piece road funding, IGA, the code client, code compliance coordinator full-time position, and the snow removal for the arterial streets and sidewalks outside of downtown.
We have consensus on that. Alderman Fanukin?
Well, I think that the piece road funding mechanism is something that we can resolve at a later date after the staff continues our meetings with county staff, and since it's budgeted right now as an income item, it's not budgeted as an expense, that if we just leave it alone at this point, we're, we're fine, and then we can make additional cuts to revenue and offsets at, at that time as the, you know, once an agreement's reached, rather than dealing with that now.
I would say personally, from my perspective, being that we don't have an answer on it, I, I think it shouldn't be included as a revenue item at this point, and that's my personal philosophy on it. I, it, we should, previous to now, to how we budgeted it, it's obviously an expense that we've taken. It's not a one-time expense, as far as I'm concerned. It's a continuing expense from a long-term contract. Again, knowing that we don't have any answer, I think it would, for me at least, make more sense to come in later with that, and obviously, if that revenue comes back into the budget, I'm certain we'll find a way of spending it, but to do it the opposite way, I think right now is unfair. If that's my perspective on it.
And I understand that, Dave, entirely. It's just that then that forces us tonight to make, you know, an additional expenditure offset to that, you know, to the tune of $245,000. So, I mean, that's going to require a bit more work here this evening. That's my only comment, and if that's the desire of the rest of my colleagues, I'll go along with that.
I agree with Alderman Fanukin that I think we still have some time to learn the outcome of discussions with the county. While it was certainly presented by the county as, you know, a concern on their part, it sounds as though the groundwork has been laid and plans have been made for ongoing discussions. So, I'm at least reasonably positive that some accommodation will come about. I'm not expecting that they're going to say, oh, sure, you know, $245,000, yeah, we can absorb, but I also don't think that, you know, we're going, the city is going to be expected to produce that either. So, I think there's going to be some point between zero and 245, and we, we need more information on that because otherwise, we are forced to make additional expenditure reductions which may, probably would have long-reaching consequences which we may not have to make. Did I quote you correctly, Bill?
Well, actually, I think you made a perfect argument for putting it back into the budget as an expense.
Correct.
So, and then I think that, you know, we can, you know, there are some items here that we could go ahead and look at to offset that other expense, and then, you know, if we get that windfall at that point, then we can add some of these things back on, and, you know, I'm trying not to look at Tim Holdeman as I say this, but the dump truck could be 144,000 of that right there, and then we just have to look at another hundred. So.
So, I'm hearing consensus that we agree with one, two, and three at this point.
I thought you were, I thought you were talking about two and three.
Well, that's what I was talking about, but like I said, Kate made a great argument for leaving it as, leaving it as an expense, even though she was trying to argue the other way. I'd love to hear from my very fiscally conservative colleague down there at the far end.
I like one and two, or I'm sorry, I like two and three, and I think the wheels are in motion to take it out. So, I, you know, I.
What do you mean? Just for clarification, by take it out?
So, it's not in the budget as today. We've already, in our last meeting, we've already did a first reading and approval of changing the tax code that takes that out, the agreement out, I believe, and I believe this gives us some leverage at the bargaining table. To not have it in the budget, to not put it back in the budget right now, gives us some leverage at the bargaining table.
Okay. Alderman Verber?
But then how does that affect the county? Are there immediate negative impacts for those dollars?
I think the council has several options. So, number one, last week, the mayor and city attorney and I met with representatives from the county to discuss the situation, and we've agreed to have a follow-up meeting in the next couple of weeks. The county relayed their background information as to what brought us to this point with the agreement, and their perspective is all the agreements are cumulative dating back to 1999. I will defer to city attorney Dean Frieders, if you want, you know, to go back through the legal opinion as to why, as a city, we feel very confident that you, as the council, could repeal that half, half percent and reinstitute it, not have to pay the county that. In the interest of intergovernmental cooperation, we are continuing the discussion, knowing their background, and so we've expressed to them that there are other issues that we see an impact, that we don't get any value or benefit. Specifically, we talked about Peace Road and the impact of landfill and all the trucks that are routed per various agreements off of I-88, north on Peace Road, east on, on Lincoln Highway, and that is there any way, long-term, that the county can help the city address improvements to Peace Road, knowing it's in the interest of both City of DeKalb and DeKalb County to make sure Peace Road is, is in its best state possible, number one, because of the further build-out of Park 88, and number two, the anticipated build-out, build-out south of 88. So, we left it where the county administrator is going to follow up with the county engineer. We will be setting up a follow-up meeting once that has taken place, but most likely after your December 11th meeting. So, the, our recommendation based on that meeting is we're going to ask the council not to take action on, on the second reading of the repeal of the ordinance. You have various options, and it will be stated in the memo. Number one, go that route. Number two, as Director Tockington has communicated, as we've looked at this, you could still act to repeal, but you could also still provide the county with that $245,000, but not be contractually obligated. So, you could still do that. Typically, the finance department, I believe, cuts that check towards the end of the fiscal year. So, there's all different options of, of how you could proceed. Ultimately, we are working very cooperatively with them to see if we can find some type of resolution where they can address us and help us with some issues that we're experiencing specifically with Peace Road. If we go in that direction, there's going to be different impact on different funds. The other thing I think Director Tockington has pointed out is the timing within the state of Illinois, if there's a repeal on sales tax, you would need to take action by April in order for that to have the impact by the end of the year. So, if you look at it from a window perspective, if you do take our recommendation of not taking action on the second reading on your meeting a week from today on December 11th, you have really between now and April, if you so choose to still repeal that, depending upon where the discussions go with the county. But it was a very positive discussion that we had with them last week, and we look forward to continuing that very positive discussion.
Thank you.
Being that we don't, that we're likely going to follow that path, and that in doing so, we would have to leave that expenditure in, again, I, I feel pretty strongly that we shouldn't have it budgeted as a revenue item, knowing that information, that we're likely not going to have it in our budget at this point unless we make a change down the road. I, I don't feel comfortable budgeting for a revenue that we, at budget time, don't, shouldn't assume we're going to have at this point. The, the status quo of making that payment to the county would be in, and I, again, I would like to see it reflected in the budget that way.
Can I clarify at how this goes into the budget? So, the sales tax comes in as a revenue, it'll stay in as a revenue. So, what your direction really is on the expenditure, so the revenue's in either way. So, I won't be adjusting your sales tax because that is part of what you will receive. It's whether or not you want to show 245 as an expenditure out, 245,000, or if you want to leave it at zero, which is what it's at right now. So, you have kind of the multiple options, but what we're really talking about is, are you adding expenditure back into the general fund? Even though it's related to revenue, it's the expenditure that will be adjusted.
I think obviously two and three is the easiest one at this point, then. Do we have any issues with two and three being added back in? All right, so we can give a consensus on at least directions two and three.
But with offsets, with toward finding offsets to?
I think we'll get there. Obviously, we have the offsets on the next options.
Okay.
So, I think that will certainly be part of the conversation tonight. I'm just trying to get through the agenda that we have in front of us. Again, I think that leaves us back at option one, and I, I think I'm hearing a certain split amongst the group, so I guess I would probably go down the line to see, in the affirmative, do you support adding option one at this point?
No.
That is a vote.
I'm sorry?
That is a vote.
No, well, okay, is, you just said, do I support it? I said, no.
Okay.
That's not a vote. I'm not voting.
Correct.
My opinion is no, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same, yeah, no.
Clarify what yes or no means.
Do you support taking the expenditure at this point? Right now, the budget as it sits shows that we are not paying the county that $245,000. Do you want to leave it that way?
Yes.
Or do you want to change it to show that we are for the time being until we get more information?
I want, yes.
The way you worded that, you just flipped it.
Yeah, you did flip it.
The way the budget is showing now, we are, we are not paying the county the $245,000.
Correct.
Do you want to leave it as, as it is shown in the budget now, or do you want to show it that we are paying that $245,000 of this?
I want to leave it as it is now.
My opinion is no, along with favor and perfect.
Leave it how it is now?
Mm-hmm.
I think we have consensus there.
So, the consensus is to leave it out of the expenditures?
Correct.
Got it.
As far as I understand.
And I will note that if you add two and three, if you're looking to do offsets, you could either be okay with the 24.96% or you need $16,000 to cover the difference.
I have a question.
Alderman Faver?
Well, I guess it depends on what we determine as offsets because are we trying to offset? Because that's 167,000 plus some change, or are we just trying to get to 25% as the And that's 16,000 to get back to 25% fund balance. Thank you. I took Alderman Verber's point to be that we need to now find, now that we've made this decision, as a group, we need to find 167, 168,000 in budget cuts.
Again, I think we'll get that when we get down to those offset items.
Yes, no, I just want to.
It'll be what's in and what's out.
I just want to understand, I just want to make sure that we understand when we say offsets, are we saying to get to 25% fund balance, or are we saying to find 167,000? And Alderman Verber said offset meant 167.
Yes.
So, I'm just setting the ground rules as we go forward.
And I guess I would say 25% is our policy, and if we can get to that policy without having to cut some additional services, I would be in favor of that. We've already cut, how much?
It's about 1.1 million.
1.1 million from it in order to get to that fund balance policy of 25%. If the talks with the county go through, well, then we have to have that additional talk about some additional cuts, transfers, whatever going with that, but I, I think if we can get to 25%, I think that should be our goal tonight, myself.
Alderman Fanukin?
All right, so then, you know, if the goal is to get back to 25%, though, as I understand that, that would still leave us with a deficit in the FY 18 budget. Am I correct, Molly?
So, your expenditures would be higher than your revenues, but you have a lot of one-time purchases that come out of the general fund. So, use of fund balance to go back to your 25% policy is an acceptable use of the fund balance. So, you do have one-time purchases that are in the expenditures that are above revenue.
Okay, so, I mean, that, I think that's the difference in what you're suggesting and what Mike Verber is suggesting, you know, about a balanced budget versus just having a 25% fund balance. And I think there's several other items that we're going to be talking about as possibly restoring to the budget as we go along here this evening. So, I think that let's keep both those items in the back of our minds as we move along because I'm sure we all have some other items that we want to bring up. I know Mike has already mentioned ban. There's probably a couple other things as we move along.
Okay, so, my understanding is, in the past, we've budgeted 50,000 for the ban?
60. 60.
60. And what has been typically spent?
They've been spending around 50,000. They've been spending around 50,000, so it's $10,000 less than what's budgeted.
Moving through our agenda as we have in front of us, I guess the next question obviously is option four, which would be a local motor fuel tax rate increase. Obviously, there's going to be several other questions. Do you want to present this one separately, Molly, to explain what this revenue is going to go toward, or?
Yeah, I can just recap. So one cent per gallon is about $180,000 in revenue that we're currently receiving for the local motor fuel tax. There is one gas station that's about 30% of the local motor fuel tax that we receive right now at the Oasis, and so that's mainly out-of-town drivers that were, you know, using fuel and paying the tax for us that helps benefit our city. So there is some nexus to the people who drive on the roads to help support the condition of the road, but it also picks up people that don't live in the city. So you help generate additional revenue through that. So you could increase the local motor fuel tax at any interval that you would like, with the one cent being about $180,000, but it is for street improvement because there's a nexus to that tax and the foundation of it for kind of the road maintenance. And so then it would go into the capital projects to support street maintenance.
Alderman Furbick?
Well, you know, one of the things that we heard quite a bit over the last year has been about the condition of the roads. And since we've decided not to have the sales, general sales and tax increase, which was going to support the roads, this would help replace some of those dollars with, as Molly has stated, a significant part of that increased revenue coming from people from out of town as they pass through on a tollway. You know, and since we know that it's dedicated to the streets, I'd even like to, you know, include a caveat that'd be to non-TIP district road repairs also, so that it would be very clear where we wanted that directed, because I think that's an important piece of the puzzle. You know, one cent more a gallon at this point, I don't think is going to make a huge difference individually. I mean, like in my car, that's an extra 10 cents a tank full. For somebody who has a bigger tank, it's maybe 20 to 25 cents difference. Yes, it is another tax, I'm very aware of that, but it's one of the ones that you can control on your own, too.
Alderman Noriko?
I think the fact that it would be directed, in other words, there's a clear relationship between how the tax is gathered and then what it's used for. I think that makes it more understandable for people. Again, another tax, not great, but it would also help that situation that we keep hearing about and that we experience, too, the condition of the streets.
Does anyone have any other issues with option four?
My opinion is yes.
Does that provide the direction you need, Molly?
So it's yes to one cent?
Yes, to one cent.
I mean, you know, we only heard from a couple of us. I'd like to hear, you know, is there, again, consensus? Tony, Mike, Pat?
Yes.
No, I said I was in agreement. I hate to say this, but I'm almost like maybe two cents. I don't know. Is, boy, the roads are...
I think that a one-cent tax at this time is probably enough for most people to swallow. It's obviously something we can revisit in the future. But particularly, you know, it might make it easier to look at it again next year for another potential if people see success in what we're doing already with that first penny.
So I understand that, you know, a portion of the tax would be paid by people from out of town. A portion of it would be paid by people in town. The same thing could be said for a sales tax increase. Part of that total increase is a way to get money in taxes from students who don't pay property taxes and so to contribute to the area who aren't residents. You could say that about this as well. I guess my concern is 180,000 pays for engineering fees, but doesn't actually pay for anything else. Or it pays for 10 feet of asphalt. Or, you know, it would pay more to replace some sidewalks, you know, rather than in the streets. But once again, you know, it doesn't do much bang for the buck for me.
Well, the only, the only thing is that because of the state amendment that was passed just over a year ago, it has to be dedicated to the streets, and there's limited places it can go. It has to be dedicated to transportation resources. I know that we have a portion right now that goes to support the airport. We have, you know, another portion that goes to support the streets. But I think particularly in light of our not going to have the general sales and tax increase, we need to do something specific for the streets to move this along.
I guess I'm not in favor so much.
Alderman Furbick?
Yeah, I would not yet be in favor either, because I don't believe, again, we've taken the time or have had the time to make the structural improvements in our city's organization. We're talking about reorganizing city services, and to me, any discussion of increase would be premature until we can figure out what would be those solutions to find cost savings or efficiencies without impacting services first.
But I have to remind you, Mike, that this is not a general fund revenue source expenditure. It's strictly capital funding directly to the streets.
Understood. And this would replace what was coming from the sales tax as a pass-through from the general fund, correct? To keep that funding equal?
No, this would be lower than what the sales tax would generate. To get close to the, what the sales tax would be, probably about three cent increase. Because, yeah, it'd be about a three cent increase.
If I may, Dave, I think that originally in the budget, it showed $417,000 coming from sales tax. So this is not even half of a replacement, but it is better than none at all. Because as it was, we were only going to have, I'm just looking here quickly, $250,000 on this particular fund for streets, so it would make a significant impact on that.
Personally, I would tend to agree if you're going to do it, to go to two, which is surprising, I guess, to me. If you're going to go to an MFT, I don't think, one, I agree with Alderman Markwart, that one doesn't get us far enough. It just doesn't generate enough revenue to matter at that point either. My thought is, well, I appreciate the 180,000 go to roads, and I do feel we need to invest in roads. 180 isn't enough to make an impact, so either, I mean, for me, it would be zero or two. I just don't feel one generates enough revenue, unfortunately.
Well, you know, I could, you know, concede going to 2% would have a bigger bang. And if that's the direction the remainder council goes, but, you know, there is some differences of opinion already at zero and one, so.
Alderman Noriko?
I had originally spoken in favor of it, but I could live with two. I mean, I certainly understand the argument for two. And the reality is, there are going to be people upset, no matter how much, and we certainly do need to make more of a commitment to streets. So two would be okay.
Take two.
Any comments down there?
I'd like two. I mean, that's, I'm the one who said it. I think we have consensus at two cents.
Okay, so I have a second follow-up question. Because this wasn't originally in the budget, would you do first and second reading on December 11th, or you want this kind of a second, a separate action? Because it does tie into the budget, and there's a nexus with that. But it, your next meeting would be when we'd have that.
Again, obviously, the next meeting, we have a budget in first and second read. I would like to see it broken out as a separate line item for true, for full transparency. Budget the full amount of the two cents, and then have it as a separate item on the same night, I think would be appropriate.
With first and second reading on December 11th?
Yes.
Would that be prior to budget approval or after? And that's a question over there...
I would imagine it would have to be prior to.
I know. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm looking over that way. So that would have to be on the agenda prior to adoption of the budget.
Correct. Obviously, now, I think we're moving toward the direction of offsets, whether it's that $16,000 amount to get us to the 25% fund balance, or a full offset of the expenditures for options two and three that we have consensus on. If you'll indulge me, I think it would be appropriate to call for public comment now, only because I think there's going to be some strong comments on that, and add those into our discussion prior to making any, any decisions. Alderman Markwart?
I just wanted to ask, is the motor fuel tax procedure the same as the sales tax procedure? So it would be half a year type of thing, or how does that get enacted? Is it January 1st, you know?
I'll have to find out. I would assume, because it's a little different than the sales tax, that there might be a little bit more leniency, but I will have to follow up on that one.
Going to my speaker request forums, I would like to call Dwayne Brown.
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. If anybody thinks the fiscal year budget this year is hard, wait till the fiscal year 2019 budget and beyond. This is going to seem easy. Did I hear a two, a two cent per gallon proposed gasoline tax? I can imagine the Sycamore Station owners are dreaming right now. They're envisioning the long lines of the people from DeKalb coming to Sycamore to gas up their tanks. We can't afford, we can't sustain the amount of wage growth that we are experiencing, projected to be 13% in four years. I don't see the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Local 813 coming forward and saying, "We'll work with the city. We don't want any raises. We'll lower our wages." I, I, or I don't see the International Association of Firefighters or the Fraternal Order of Police telling us they will defer their 2.5% annual pay raises. We need to impose a hiring freeze immediately. I was glad to see NIU's interim president recently approve a raise for some employees who hadn't had one in seven years. I can relate to that. I went from 1982 to 1989 with no raise. If the city can't control wage growth, they will face the consequences. There should be no new hiring done until the city has funds to cover 100% of each new employee's pay, benefits, and pension. Working overtime to a certain point is still less expensive than hiring new employees. I have some statistics here. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, after adjusting for inflation, today's average hourly wage is just about the same, has just about the same purchasing power as it did in 1979. Following a long slide in the 1980s and early 1990s, and a bumpy, inconsistent growth since then, in fact, in real terms, the average wage peaked more than 40 years ago. The $4.03 an hour rate recorded in January 1973 has the same purchasing power as $22.41 would today. When it comes to the pace of annual pay raises, the top 1% wage grew 138%, while wages for the bottom 90% grew 15%. Middle-class wages are stagnant. The median hourly wage in the U.S. is $24.57. The minimum wage would be over $18 per hour had it risen along with productivity. The taxpayers are rejecting any new taxes, as was demonstrated by the backlash on the proposed 1% sales tax increase. We are not growing. Look at the Toyota Mazda plant we lost. Look what we've got downtown, at the Cornerstone Project, at the Plaza DeKalb and SunDog, all subsidized with TIP funds. We are not growing. Or look at the number of single-family home building permits or lack thereof, new businesses not locating here because of high taxes and a stagnant local economy. I wish we had the funding to increase the amount spent on streets and fleet, hire new police officers and firemen and city employees, but we don't. And until we do, we must live within our budget. Thank you.
Mr. Jim Mason?
Dwayne, wow. History repeats itself. Good to see everybody here. I've been coming in here since 1969, and this is the best debate on spending that I've seen. You people didn't make this mess. Other people did. The economy runs away from us in many ways, whether overregulation or just outright spending money. What you've done here tonight is you kind of held, held where you're at on expenditures. I just looked at it. You cut 1.1 million on a $33 billion budget. That's zero, that's .033 cut. Okay. So, but if that's better than having an increase, don't forget, anytime you raise taxes, you cut yourself out of the community of cities. Janesville is 5% on their sales tax. So if you're going to buy a bunch of concrete and wood and anything else, you're not going to buy it in DeKalb. So as soon as you get back to 7%, maybe 6%, then people think twice. We all realize that our real estate taxes are 2/3 higher. God bless you. God bless you. You gotta, everybody realizes our real estate taxes are the, one of the highest in the whole United States of America. We may be coming to an end of that. There may be a solution to that. Our taxes are about 2/3 higher than they should be per square foot. And so that's what makes it so hard for the city to be able to fund itself is because we've got a, we've got a squeeze. So I want to compliment everybody here tonight. I sat here and listened to this, and I was very impressed, and hold the line on this thing. And let's see if we can get our real estate taxes under control. There's lots of good news coming down the road. I'll keep you posted. God bless all of you.
Mr. Larry Epperson?
Good evening, and I'm here just as chair of the Human Relations Commission. And just a couple brief remarks about the cultural competency training. I'm particularly talking of the Attachment A for tonight's meeting, numbers 22, 32, and 41. First of all, I probably would surprise you that I think the compromise, the cut of 31,500 from the fire and police personnel training is at least, it's eliminating the overtime budgeted amount. While that would be ideal in light of what the city is facing, I think we understand that, that at least continuing the training, albeit that it might have to be stopped any given day, that the fire or police have a, have... that the fire or police have a, have a call, it at least is maintaining a very important part of the training. That is including a facilitator. If any of you have been involved in cultural diversity training, you know that you need a facilitator to both moderate as well as to ask particular follow-up questions to the particular topic and help guide through the various viewpoints, et cetera, et cetera. That leads me to being more concerned and most concerned for the fact that there's 6,500 cut out for having a facilitator for the public safety personnel. And they would simply have to rely on a videotape, et cetera. For 6,500, if any of you have gone to conferences, meetings, workshops where there's been a video or a PowerPoint presentation, you'll know that you do not get the full benefit. Typically, a facilitator, someone that's knowledgeable, leading the discussion, actually able to answer questions from people and also being able to involve the people that are attending in telling their stories, which are so important part of the whole facilitation. I would simply strongly recommend that in, in the fine-line negotiations where it's, you're talking about things that are, you know, around $5,000, that if at all possible, to try to continue that in, in the various trade-offs. Otherwise, I would recommend to the city staff that we work together to try and find individuals that are trained facilitators that would be willing to come in during those videos and try to lead some of the discussions. Other than that, again, I would just like to congratulate the council and the city staff on where you've gotten to on trying to build a budget, given the obstacles that you're facing on trying to do the best possible. I've been personally very concerned about hearing out in the public or apparently even at some of the council meetings, some of the, I guess the nicest thing to say is nasty assumptions and remarks that have been directed both at personnel as well as even, I think, the council. All of my interactions with council persons or city staff, and when I've challenged things or I have asked difficult questions about where priorities are, I have never, ever encountered any arrogance, any willingness to try to avoid answering the question. And I think that it is very important that as we go forward as a community, that we offer our respect to the individuals such as yourselves that are trying to put together a budget that is never going to please everyone, but that hopefully will have been thought out. So I thank you personally for your dedication to this job. I am so glad that I am not having to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Pamela Burbick.
Pam Burbick, third board. My questions are mostly directed towards Molly. Hi Molly, nice to meet you. My first question is my biggest concern and at the risk that I may be overlooking something. I, Per Alterman Jacobson, I have to agree with him. I tend to be a line-by-line budget reviewer. And the first thing that I, there's just one big item I want to ask you about on the budget, and that is in comparing the general fund revenues for the fiscal year '17 estimate with the fiscal year '18 proposed. Now, my understanding is that the EAV is estimated to be going up 5.2%. So when I saw the increased difference between '17 and '18, that's not 5.2%, it's 7.89%. So I'm trying to find out what I may have overlooked there.
Yeah, I emailed you back, but I don't know if you got it before you came to the meeting. So there's different factors that go into every person's personal property tax levy. So are you in a special service area? What parts of the levy are you looking at? So the portion, the rate that I know you came up with that you had was 1.6583?
Oh, that's a different question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's where we were. But when I looked at those same levies, which were the corporate, I'm rough, police, fire pensions, and then the debt service after abatement, and then adding the library, on this one specific house I looked at, it would actually reduce their rate to 1.6571. So it's very, when we levy the tax levy, we're making an estimation for the city as a whole. So the overall EAV would be a 5.2% increase. But when you start to look at how the levies are kind of put onto your tax bill or each individual home, it comes out a little bit differently for each person. But there's lots of factors into what's on your tax bill. So I was just using one specific location to show that, you know, in that person, in that instance, there was a decrease in those levies. But then that home also has a special service area. So there's different factors in everyone's levy. So the estimate, the FYE team proposed on the financial forecasts that were included as part of this include keeping the same overall rate, the same 1.6629 for every household. So it's at the bigger picture than specific household by household.
Well, I'm just trying to find out with all of the figures that we use, for example, the 13 million and some tax levy dollars was an estimated 5.2% over last year's levy. So we seem to be constantly using the 5.2% for comparisons. And, and yet in our general fund revenue for property tax, we're using that 6 million and some for 2018. That's 7.89%. So what you're saying is that there's other people's tax rate, the tax rate varies from person to person? Is that what you're saying? Or from entity to entity? So some might be paying 1.66, one, some might be paying 1.65, some might be paying 1.78.
This is not, it's not for the multiple entities. So within the city's levy, there's multiple levies that the city has to set a dollar amount for.
Yes.
So excluding anything that's not city-related, and I'm counting the library's part of the city because it's ultimately in that levy that's passed by the city council.
This is just a, this is, this is just the city's portion of the tax bill I'm talking about.
Right. So first you, the truth in taxation assumes that all debt service will be paid. So that 13 million referred to includes all debt service. Then we ask council to abate the majority of the debt service except for the levy. So there's multiple factors that go into it. And then there's, the different levies are, there's a corporate levy, the I'm rough levy, the police-fire levy, library levy, the debt after abatement ends up being on there, and then the different special service areas. So if you're in a special service area, then you will, also you'll pay the base in a city rate and your special service area amount. But the kind of formula that's used to determine the rate is the extended levy divided by the EAV. So all of those levies have the same EAV, which comes out to that 1.6629 rate. So when we increased the EAV by 5.2%, the extended amount divided by that's still at the 5.2% increase. You get the same rate at 1.6629 because the EAV increased the 5.2%.
I understand all that, but I don't understand the increase from the 2017 estimate to the proposed 2018 property tax revenue. So that, I know how all of that works. And that doesn't explain why there's a big difference there between the 5.2 and the 7.89.
They don't all go into the same fund? So you'd have to look at multiple funds?
I'm just looking at the very first property tax revenue, all being going to pensions, of course. And that's the only line I'm looking at. So our property taxes are all going to the pensions and the library debt, right?
The pensions, the library operating, their regular levy plus the little under 400,000, or $500,000, that's their debt portion. So there's also the library operating levy included.
Well, this isn't working out. It's not a big deal to discuss the difference between the 2016 tax rate, which is 1.6583 versus the 1.6629. But the 1.6583 came right off my tax bill. And I'm not in a special service area or anything. I'm an ordinary taxpayer. So I, I didn't understand that difference either. And the last thing is, this is really kind of just a question of wording. And this is all, this for the, probably the city manager's office. But under TIF funding, for TIF number one, we'll call it, the central tax, this has bothered me for years, where we get down to other capital improvements, $3,716,407, which is not other capital improvements. It basically are surplus payments to all the different taxing entities. So my question is, couldn't we identify that more accurately for the purpose of transparency? And does that $3 million and some include anything besides the surplus payments back to the various taxing entities?
Of that, the TIF amount, you have 3, 3,716,407 of that. $3,521,407 is the property tax surplus that does go back to the various taxing districts. We would be more than willing to work with the council as we work on the fiscal year '19 budget to see how you want that represented moving forward.
That's kind of like getting down to a little league. But you see what I mean? It's like it, it isn't capital improvements. It's, you know, it's surplus, so. Okay. And that's my only questions. I don't think they've been answered. And maybe I need to set a, set a separate appointment with Molly to find out that big difference between fiscal '17 and '18 property tax revenue because I'm not getting any answer off of that. So two comments. First of all, I think that the $10,000 that you want to remove for the band is, should go back in because we spend a lot and lot of money for safety and everything else. But we're always looking at what nice things we can do for all the citizens of DeKalb. So if you go out to the park, you know that anybody can go to that band performance, no matter what their income is. They don't have to pay anything. I think that's one of the nicest things that we do for the city is to provide those band concerts. And of course, there may be other ways to come up with the funding, but I certainly would hate to see us trying to charge for that or anything like that. So rich or poor, anybody can go to those band concerts. And we need more nice things going on in the city and not always reading about shootings and so forth. Yes, we have to address those issues, but we're talking about only $60,000. And I'm glad to hear you talking about adding the crime-free housing coordinator back in because this person is a professional person that used to be a police officer. And I think that with their contacts and the background that this particular person has, and I barely know this person, but I know his reputation, I am glad to see that you're adding that back in. And I hope he continues in that capacity because I didn't at all think that it was beneficial to try to change this responsibility over to the Community Development Director. I don't think that's a responsibility that would shape up well for that person. Thank you.
Those are all the forms I have tonight. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? There's one gentleman in the audience. I would ask that for the sake of the record, when you're done speaking, if you can get a speaker form to Ruth, I would certainly appreciate it, as I'm sure she would as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andre Williams. I am the 19th precinct community person here in DeKalb. There was three things that I wanted to go over. The first, which I feel is kind of very important with the thing for hiring new police officers. Well, I don't know how that process works. I've never been on that side of the law. However, with a lot of the things that's going on in the communities, there, a lot of it hasn't been given a chance to work. When we have a judicial system that constantly allows repeat offenders signature bonds, it makes it seem like there's a, there's a bit of more of a crime rate or like there's a bigger crime problem. But it's not. It's just the same individuals who's being allowed back into communities after committing crimes against people. And of course, it would look like, you know, maybe there's a need for new law enforcement. But if some of the requested budgets are used the right way by the law enforcement as well as some of the other budgets that will be imposed next month, once the, once the budgets are allowed to be put in, then I believe that there will be a decrease in some of the crimes, some of the crimes that are here in the city of DeKalb. Also, I want to just say that I support having the, the streets and stuff towed and the snow removal and things like that. But what percentage of that goes to the, you were talking about on Sycamore Road? What, what percentage of that is the responsibility of the business owner? Or even some of the business owners on Fourth Street where, on the intersection where you were talking about on Taylor Street where 7-Eleven is and the auto shops that are right there? You know, are they responsible for, you know, that part? And maybe if so, if some of these businesses are responsible for a certain level of snow removal, then would that, or would that not decrease the amount of money that's needed to cover such a budget?
Oh, if the cost for that were moved to a different, the business or in some other fashion, then yes, that would alleviate the city from paying for that service.
Okay. So is there, is there a certain proposal that could be imposed on the certain business owners who are in those intersections to kind of, to help with that? As opposed to just taking away from a budget that we're, that we're, you know, trying to get together?
I think one of the aldermen has already mentioned a potential funding source, which is a special service area, and it's a policy decision for the council. But what I heard some council members say is that might be a point of discussion as the fiscal year '19 budget is reviewed in early 2018.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, I will open it back up to the council as we move down our agenda to discuss both the policy behind which offsetting revenue direction we go, whether it is dollar-for-dollar or back to the 25% reserve amount, and what cuts they feel from the list provided or elsewhere that they would be comfortable with. or elsewhere, that they would be comfortable with. Alderman Norieco.
I recommend that we utilize the fund balance policy figure of 25% as our goal. We've already made relatively significant cuts, and I think with, without the opportunity that Alderman Verbic has referred to, to, you know, take a more wholesale and holistic look at city operations, continuing to cut significant dollars may not be prudent, and, you know, certainly we can take a look at the figure, the $16,000, to get to the 25%.
Any other comments? Alderman Faber.
Other than what we just did with the motor fuel tax, I don't believe our budget, I think we've, at least we've taken out most everything out of streets, is that correct?
You won't see it on those sheets, because streets is a different fund, and those financial forecasts are in the general fund.
Okay.
But you did, by having no sales tax, we took in the additional revenue that was going to street maintenance out.
So then let me just ask then, what is the, is the budgeted amount for 2018 for streets, aside from the new fuel tax, is it going to be the same amount as 2017?
It's actually an increase in, Director Holdman can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a million dollars from the motor fuel tax fund, then there's a half a million between the two TIFs, and $250,000, I think, directly out of capital projects fund. So it'd be 1.75 million total for streets this year, or in FY18.
Okay, and plus the new funding?
Right, that's before we added anything for sales tax. And then if you took that out, we're back to that, but then adding two cents for local motor fuel tax, well, I have $360,000 to there.
I guess kind of with that being said, I'm okay with going to the 25% fund balance.
Any other comments?
I believe our goal should be a balanced budget, so I'm willing to take the time it needs to actually balance it. Certainly, I agree that 25% is important, but I believe we need to get into the practice of balancing our budget, and not necessarily meeting just a fund balance goal.
Alderman Fanouken.
Molly, if possible, if we're at the 25%, what kind of a deficit budget does that give us? What kind of a number are we looking at trying to cover up then?
Your expenditures over revenues, hold on, I'm getting to it.
I know that with two and three, we add back in $167,000 plus, so then if I'm correct, we're looking at $178,000 to bring it into balance?
Correct. But I do want to state that, so there's the finance kind of definition of a balanced budget, so I think we have two versions, and it's partly maybe the misunderstanding in when you said offsets versus what I understood. So in the financial world, a balanced budget is using revenues and fund balance to pay for your expenditures, so when you look at that fund balance, you're not negative, so your fund balance is actually above that. So what we're really looking at here is the expenditures above revenue only. So there's, I think, a little bit of terminology there, and I think that threw me off with your question.
Yeah, the, I'm implying with the offset to say reduce expenditures, not to utilize fund balance.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it'd be $178,500?
Mike, do you have any ideas upfront?
Of which?
Of where to reduce expenditures at this point to bring us into a balanced budget.
I'm certainly willing to discuss, you know, these items and more, so, again, to Alderman Norieco's point, I don't want to haphazardly just make cuts to make cuts. We're going to get to that process of what should be our sustainable operations, but at this point, I'm certainly interested in discussing what could be those other options. In other words, I don't have anything right away to add.
Are there any specific items at this point, obviously, that we'd recommend to at least make us to that $16,000? That's the lowest hanging from the list that we have in front of us. And obviously, again, to be clear, A, B, and C have already been included, these are now changes to B and C based on our direction at the last meeting.
So the engineering lab supplies, that's $5,000, and I elaborate again, I don't have the, I don't have the background sheet that listed the details on that, but it was lab supplies for testing that we could do, but it isn't something that we're necessarily required to do, and it's not something that we, fill in the blanks for me, please.
So if I could?
Absolutely.
Yes, the laboratory testing is testing of concrete, and our previous engineering staff was trained and equipped to do that testing. Currently, we don't have that capabilities, and therefore, it's not anticipated that in 2018 that we would have someone in place that could do that testing, therefore, the supplies would not be needed.
Okay, so that could be $5,000. I think we would agree on that it's not a necessary expense.
Yes.
The drug lock boxes, if I recall the original information correctly, that provides an additional level of security, but the system is operational without those lock boxes, correct?
I would defer to Chief on the differences on that.
Currently, we're going to have a system in place that is approved by IDPH. What we're looking for is a double lock system. So, like, you would have a key and I would have a key, so it has very good accountability for those control substances.
Okay, so without that, we aren't in compliance with a state requirement?
That's correct.
Okay. I feel like I'm kind of wringing out, you know, trying to draw blood or something. The, with IT, the Reich, Reiki, how do you say that? As I recall, that was a project management system. What are the implications if we don't have it, or we delay installing it?
At this point, we would be taking it out, out of service, and we, IT would then essentially come up with another solution to be able to resolve that, the need to be able to collaborate and manage those projects. Part of the, part of the exercise is really good project management skills, and that's what we're working on holistically as an organization, and improving that, being able to manage those and make efficient use of our time. From an IT standpoint, we would, we would then find alternative ways to be able to manage the same, same things that we were trying to accomplish.
So if I may add, this, similar to the Achieva software, which has already been cut, it would be going back to paper and pencil, and Excel spreadsheets, and that's how we will be tracking the strategic plan now, instead of using technology and software systems to help streamline and help with collaboration, we're just going to go back to the Excel spreadsheet, and the strategic plan is going to be tracked that way now. We'll pull it all out of the system, because that's already part of the A, B, and C cuts, so with Reich, we would do the same. Until the time where IT has the resources available to create something in-house, or something more sophisticated than Word or Excel.
Alderman Jacobson.
Alderman Faber.
Is, do we have Microsoft Project as part of our license package?
No, not at this point. Reich was brought in because the, it was going to be a bit of culture change for the organization to be able to start facilitating these things. Reich has a friendlier interface, and I thought the learning curve would be a little bit easier, which is why I chose that as opposed to going to project management, or Microsoft Project, which is a phenomenal software package. However, it really is designed for project management professionals, so I was concerned that the interface would be a little bit more intimidating, and kind of become a barrier to usage. So that's why I chose the Reich software, however, you know, we, Reich is, Microsoft Project would be on the table, however, I don't know if that would be of any cost benefit with regards to how many licenses that would be needed.
Well, Alderman Fanouken had brought up the dump truck, but again, I want to be clear that I'm open to options, but I still would like to find a way to balance the budget. I can agree with what's been suggested so far.
Of the lists, A, B, and C, that obviously are already in, are there any changes or suggestions? I know I heard IHSA discussion of funding, snow plowing in the CBD, and possible tuition reimbursement, are there any other comments on those?
And I want to clarify, with tuition reimbursement, in order to be cost-conscious, I would focus on the funding for individuals who are either currently in their final year or final semester, so that they would have the necessary funding in fiscal year 18 to finish their program.
So not the $23,500, but whatever amount?
Yes.
That requires, okay.
Any other comments on IHSA or CBD snow plowing? Alderman Fanouken.
Just a brief comment on IHSA, we could defer that cost to all next year, but then we're looking at a double cost for that next year. As it is, the 62.5 is a 50% cut from what we have been paying over the last, well, three times that the football games have been here. And as we discussed earlier, that is a revenue generator for the city and an economic development tool for a lot of the businesses here in town.
I would agree with keeping the IHSA funding.
I would also think we have consensus there, to keep the IHSA funding at the existing $20,000, which then creates another $6,250 we have to find to meet our fund balance.
No, wait, let's back up if I may. I think the way it's in the budget right now is that it was only, it was budgeted at $62.50, and if we do not take an additional cut, that's where it would stay, and that there'd be no further impact.
So the IHSA funding on how it was here is, originally in the 18 budget, it'd be $12,500, so in the year that they would come, that we'd have it in town, it'd be $25,000, so we'd use kind of the level funding for the two years to have the money to spend in the second year. So if you took this reduction, it'd be $12,500 for when the event shows. So by keeping it in, you're still at the $25,000 over the two years.
Now I'm confused, Molly, because I thought, as we had talked earlier, that we had agreed, because as I'm looking at your general funding, so you're saying that we take out another $62.50, is that what you're proposing here? I thought we had already done that off the original $12.5.
I'm pretty sure that was, well, let me double check. I thought that was a reduction in the 5%.
Right, it wasn't, yeah, if I look on page three of the attachment A, it originally was funded at $12, $12, yeah, thanks, $12.5, and then we've only taken out $62.50 to reduce it to a $62.50 expenditure.
I don't think that's correct.
So are we suggesting that we reduce it another $62.50 and zero fund that this year?
So what it is, is the 18 budget has $12,500, the list A takes it to $6,250, and then if you went with one of the option here, it would zero fund.
Right, and I don't think, at least in my mind, I don't think that's where we wanted to go. Am I correct, that we wanted to maintain that level at least? So there'd be no, if we leave it at the $62.50 funding for FY18, there's no change in the numbers where we're at right now.
Zero impact, correct.
Right.
Just taken off the table.
So just leave, leave that one off the table for reduction.
Any further reduction?
So the goal is to keep the half cut that was in last week's B?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd agree with that myself, so I think we have some consensus there as well. Again, obviously, looking at these, these cuts here would be in addition to those A, B, and C last week.
Correct.
At this point, we don't need to necessarily, if the plan is to meet that $16,000, none of those are necessary at this point, if that is the intent of the council, only to meet that $16,000, is the way I'm reading it. Effectively, these were options, if mainly we added that Peace Road funding back, that we'd have to look at cutting to balance, but at this point, if the intent of the council is to leave that in as revenue and not as an expenditure, we're, again, about $11,000 away with the testing supplies change.
Alderman Jacobson, if I could suggest, if you're looking just for the $16,000, I would add in the public works engineering intern part-time, I mean, right now, the focus for Director Holdman is to get the city engineer position filled, and that is a key priority, and allowing that person the opportunity to figure out how to manage that function. So you could keep that, not fill that engineering intern, and be able to satisfy your $16,000 reduction, if you want to just go with the 16.
Is everybody all right with that?
So, in other words, because there's no engineer to really supervise this intern position, doesn't make sense to go ahead, okay? Great.
Any other further questions, comments, concerns, or otherwise?
Well, just maybe a suggestion that we can consider going into next week, where I cannot offer a solid number, but it might be worth at least in some I cannot offer a solid number, but it might be worth at least in some areas of the city, as we have a vacancy to have a, for lack of a better term, a mandatory period of being vacant before we refill. Now, I would not want that to apply to police or fire, obviously, but I think to some of the other positions, there's at least something we could talk about, and that would help reduce some of those personnel costs as we go throughout the year. I would love to have a, I'll have a discussion with Anne Marie on the impact, and be willing to bring that back to everybody here next week.
So to address your point, Alderman Fanukin, right now, and Director Randall will have a better idea on it, there is, for all intents and purposes, vacancy time, because if a position were to be, become vacant today, by the time that the job description is reevaluated, the item is posted or advertised, interviews are done, background check is done, references are checked, are done, it's, three months is an aggressive timeframe, so typically, we see anywhere from three to six months. So that's just the minimum.
And that's on any non-public safety position?
Yes, and from what Chief Lowery has talked about earlier, and as well as Director Randall, the timing for police officer vacancies are longer, just because of the process for filling those, the number of applicants, you know, we've talked about that it's not an intentional delay, it's just the amount of time to get those positions back filled with psychological evaluation, everything that takes into consideration, and the number of people, the decreased pool of applicants that now want to be police officers.
Yeah, and I perfectly understand with the public safety positions, if there was a way we could expedite that, it'd be, that'd be awesome, but yeah, we'd certainly love to do that, so, but I think, I know you and I are going to meet over the next week.
Yes.
We can talk about that then, rather than take up time here.
Great, I would just add one other thing for the sake of the full council. What we, what each hour is currently doing is, if you want to say triaging, they look at what are the positions that have to be filled first, so there is a preference shown to public safety. As an example, in the police department, this, the grant, the position that has been funded through the grant, that has risen to the top because the time is of the essence as far as the amount of time that we have the grant funding. So we prioritize internally based upon what needs to be filled when.
And that's really one of those factors when we talk about the out years of the expenditure underspend, a lot of it has to do with those vacancy times.
Okay, thank you, and then, go ahead, Tony.
Alderman Faber. So I think we passed over, we had already, I believe we'd already come to agreement that for the property maintenance inspector part-time, that one will be taken off, that will not be filled, so that's another $28,000. On page four, it's in both options five and six.
I'm not sure, I didn't hear that, so I guess I need clarification, because there was five property maintenance inspector in list A, one was removed.
One was removed, the second one?
Or two was removed.
They've not had, they've not had two filled or had a hard time filling, is that? I'm looking at Director Joellen.
I might need some clarification as well, as your two?
No, it's on the list, page four, both in option fives and optional...
Yeah, so in list A, B, and C?
In list A, B, and C, how many are already out, I think is your question.
Correct.
So in A, it reduced the two that were vacant, but then by the council survey, C added one back in. So as it stands right now, only one is reduced, but this was giving you an option that there's still one more, if you wanted to reduce two again, you could go back to that. So right now, I only have one reduced.
And I believe our discussion earlier was that they've had a hard time filling that position, so potentially for this year, we could...
Leave it vacant.
Leave it vacant.
Be another 23.
Would you have an issue with that? So it would be, it would be the cut provided on this list to bring it to a total of three?
Three filled, and then two you're reducing from the budget.
Correct.
Got it?
Alderman.
One more question, just so that I think all of us are clear. You know, we've talked a bit around the band this evening. Do we want to leave the $10,000 reduction in place, or do we wish to restore it to the $60,000, because that impacts what else we're talking about here this evening? And, you know, I'm not familiar enough with their total operation to know what their actual costs are. I know that Molly has mentioned that their costs have been around $50,000 each year, but...
Alderman Rico.
If there is the historical evidence that they've only expended $50,000, that's what I think we should budget. And I've actually gotten a fair number of emails on this subject, and I've made sure that people understood that we were not, at this point, we were not going to eliminate funding, but I think we need to be reasonable about the funding, and if they haven't demonstrated any special need for next year, and they've historically spent $50,000, I think $50,000 should be the figure. I don't want to give money away.
Alderman Faber. I'm in agreement with Alderman Rico. I think we can leave that 10K reduction in funding, and again, same, I've received several emails, it's amazing, it's amazing how many are from out of town, though, but I've enjoyed the band, my family has enjoyed the band, we're not cutting the band, we're not eliminating the band, we're just going to seek other avenues of funding for the band, and we're going to help them and assist them in that, but...
In fairness, it's not necessarily a reduction of funding this year.
Thank you.
It's merely a reduction of a budget line item that they're not maxing out anyway.
Correct.
So this year, the intent would be that they don't see any impact to their actual operating budget, but as a...
Warning.
As a, not necessarily a warning, but as, to show their intent that in the future there may need to be an actual cut in some of their funding, and that they should start planning for that and preparing for that, and looking into other opportunities, both as a 501(c)(3) and the possibility of alcohol being raised, and maybe some private sponsorship, and reaching out and working with them as a partner and saying, "We appreciate what you do. We don't want to lose our municipal band, but at some point in the very near future, not necessarily this fiscal, but going forward, we need them to pick up a little bit more, just as we ask all of our public, publicly-supported entities, they need to do some fundraising, they need to do some cost sharing on their side and pick up some of those expenses." So again, I think it is important to share that message, this isn't a reduction this year. It's a reduction merely in the budgeted line item that they are not using.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Alderman Verbeck.
So they've been using about $50,000 per year then for multiple years, or was that just last year?
It was a five-year look.
Five-year look, okay. And I'm willing to accept that as long as there's no impact to their operations.
Anything else tonight?
Can I clarify everything I've heard?
Sure.
Make sure we have it.
I think that would probably be most appropriate, and I would ask, obviously, going into next week, there's been so many things in and out, in and out, I think it would be helpful, especially for me and probably for most of the council members, to have the overall list of what A, B, and C ended up washing out to, just so we know exactly what is in and what is out going forward.
I understand, so I'm right there with you. So what I've heard tonight is for option one, the intergovernmental agreement for Peace Road funding, we're going to leave that out of the budget for further discussions down the line. Options two and three, which is the co-compliance coordinator and snow removal for the arterial streets, the sidewalks that are outside of downtown, you want both of those added back into the budget. Item four, local motor fuel tax, this is a yes to a $0.02 per gallon increase to the rate. That first and second reading will be on December 11th, prior to the budget as a separate ordinance, and I will have more information at that time about the actual process of how that works with that, because there might not be a full year's impact, depending on when we have to enact it. That we're going to reach, the goal was to go to the 25% fund balance, fund, fund balance policy, so 25% of expenditures, which I think you've gone a little bit over. So you have a reduction to take the engineering lab supplies out, the $5,000, so we'll take that out of the budget. To remove the engineering intern, it's one part-time position, $11,000, just over $11,000, to take that out of the budget, and to take the second property and maintenance inspector out of the budget, so it'd leave three from their current, that they have five, and that we'd leave in IHSA funding. I think that's everything I have.
Did you have central business district? Yes, you had central business district.
That was in already, so we won't reduce that.
Alderman Jacobson.
Alderman Faber.
I think there was one other thing that Alderman Rico would have requested, is that was to determine the tuition reimbursement funding specifically for last quarter, last semest, or last year, last semester.
Okay, I will add that.
You are welcome.
Sorry, I missed that one.
And that's an unknown number at this point.
So just to add to that, we will collect that information, as we don't have that right now. I just want to, a couple of things, just to clarify. Employees that receive the tuition reimbursement, I just want to leave it for the record, they also, as, when they receive the reimbursement, they understand that they have the responsibility of three years of service with the city, so if they were to leave three years from the last date of reimbursement, they will have to pay it back. Also, not all requests for tuition reimbursement are paid. For the non-bargaining unit employees, they only get paid if they get a B or better. So while we budget originally $54,000, which was reduced to half, we may or may not use the whole funding, but we will get the information of how far the folks that already ask for the reimbursement, how far they are from graduating.
Do you have, as like the four or five-year look back, do we know what we've expended on tuition reimbursement?
I don't have any in front of me, but we can...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Director.
No, I don't have it in front of me, but we will. There is, there was a surge this year, and I believe it's for the reasons I said before, it's because with all of the retirements looming, and some retirements at a higher position, so folks are, oh, shoot, I have one or two years to get my bachelor's or my master's to be able to apply for that position, and as you can imagine, we like to keep talent and institutional knowledge in-house, so the tuition reimbursement really helps them get to where they need to be to apply for those promotionals. So I believe that's what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
So the addition is tuition reimbursement for the people in last semester or last year, the dollar amount, and then we can do a five-year look back, that then on December 11th, along with the first and second reading on local motor fuel tax, it'd be first and second reading on the budget adoption, and I will meet with Pamela Verbeck as well, because it still seems like we have some outstanding questions there, so I have that on my to-do list. Anything else? I'll make sure I have it all. Okay.
Alderman Fanukin.
Just a couple of comments, if I may. I think we've had a productive meeting tonight, I appreciate everybody making time. Kate, again, I apologize that we had to knock your award meeting out of the way, but thank you very much. I also want to thank staff for all their hard work, and particularly Molly with providing us all these numbers and update, and the citizen input has been valuable, too, so that's, I just wanted to comment on that.
Any other closing thoughts? Senator Gorman?
You may want to, just as a suggestion, you had people speak specifically on this agenda item, there's also the public participation portion of the agenda as well, if they want to speak on anything not on the agenda.
Is there anyone in our audience who would like to speak on something specifically not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Will Heinisch.
Will Heinisch, and this goes out more to a challenge for tomorrow night, I understand there's a school board meeting, and they're talking about raising the tax levy at the school board meeting. I hope the school board takes note of what you have accomplished by reducing your budget by $1 million and holding the line on taxes. I would like to present that as a challenge to the school board, and I hope the city communicates that to the school board. You have definitely done your part, and I would say it's time that the school board does their part as well, as you all know, they're a larger piece of the pie. Again, I said there was between a rock and a hard spot, you split the rock in half, you're slowly breaking the one rock down, the other half of the rock, you have a challenge that you'll take on next year. And again, thank you, and I commend you for your service and time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Any council member comments? With that, an entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
You can actually do a voice vote if you'd like.
Even better. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.